Good afternoon and thank you for joining us today. We appreciate your patience as we work through some technical difficulties, but we are ready to go. Thank you again for joining us as the National Board of Public Health Examiners present our fourth in our series of five webinars geared to explaining the certification in public health or CPH credential and to help you prepare for your upcoming exam. Each of our sessions are two and a half to three hours long and include a presentation, a lecture component, as well as some interactive segments. A break will be offered midway through the presentation with a time for question and answers at that time, as well as at the end of the presentation. This presentation will be archived on the NVPHU website. You may register for the remaining session on biostatistics on February 12th, 2015 at 12 noon on the NVPHU website. Today's session is a feature on behavioral and social sciences. We are pleased to have Dr. Lisa Omar, professor at the Department of Community Health and Prevention at Drexel University School of Public Health. Dr. Omar, thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much and welcome to everyone and I'm so delighted to be able to help you study for the social and behavioral sciences section of the CPH exam. What I'm going to do is start off with, excuse me.
Yes, we can hear you fine.
Okay, great. I'm going to start off with the definition of social and behavioral sciences in public health and then we'll go through the topics that we're going to cover today. So first of all, when we think about what social and behavioral sciences mean as part of one of the components of public health practice and the profession of public health, a key element about social and behavioral sciences is the bringing together plans with the common goal of promoting the health of the population and preventing disease. And these twin goals of health promotion and disease prevention are approached through three major strategies. One involves the enhanced understanding of what the determinants are of health and disease. And when we're talking about our understanding, we're talking about a very comprehensive understanding, looking from the individual level all the way through the societal level so that we capture indicators and risk and protective factors that are both behavioral and social determinants of health. The second strategy that's part of our multidisciplinary approach is that when we develop, implement, and evaluate interventions for health promotion and disease prevention, the intervention strategies that we are using are derived from theories of change and have an evidence base that they will work. And the evidence base comes from research methods that have been used to systematically test whether the intervention is more effective than usual and customary practices. The third strategy is that there are systematic models for planning and evaluating programs. So together, this multidisciplinary approach, going from understanding to action, is a key feature of social and behavioral sciences in the practice of public health. I have prepared a presentation that is going to cover eight of the required areas of competency for social and behavioral sciences in public health. And these eight areas are listed on the slide that you're seeing. I've divided it into a part one and a part two and we will take a 10-minute break when part one is finished and then come back and do the issues in part two. So in this first half, we are going to be discussing the pattern of disease. We're going to be looking at the social ecological model of health, which gives us a comprehensive understanding of health promotion and disease prevention. We're going to be talking through different levels of theories of change and we'll be ending the first half with information about health promotion and disease prevention. This first slide is a depiction of the changing pattern of disease in the United States. I've taken the time point of the start of the last century, so 1900, and then looking at leading causes of death, 1900 versus 2010. So over this 110-year period, we see a striking change in the types of diseases that are confronting us as public health professionals. If we look at the leading causes of death in 1900, which is the first graph, you see on the left-hand side pneumonia, tuberculosis, GI infections being the three leading causes of death. So it's a profile of infectious disease being responsible for mortality in 1900. You go to the graph that's immediately below that for 2010 and you see heart disease and cancer as the first and the second leading cause of death. So we've moved from this pattern of infectious disease to chronic disease and that calls on different types of public health strategies and public health responses because of the nature of the disease that's confronting us. Just to look at the pattern of disease in a more global way than just looking at the United States, a lot of times there is a misperception that the mortality pattern that we see in the developed world, in the United States and other developed countries, is unique to the developed level of those countries and that does not reflect necessarily a global pattern of disease. And that misconception is incorrect. This is the global mortality pattern showing the number of deaths worldwide. The graph is showing the different causes of death. The blue bar at the bottom is communicable diseases and that's accounting for 18 out of 58.8 million. Premature deaths from non-communicable diseases below the age of 60 is the red bar, that's nine. Deaths from non-communicable diseases above the age of 60 is green, that's 26 million. And injuries are the top part of that bar, the purple bar at 5.8. So if we add together the green bar and the red bar, we get that 35 million out of 58.8 million are chronic disease. Chronic disease then is accounting for about 60% of deaths worldwide. So this is not just a problem or a pattern of the developed world, it's a global pattern. This is a look at the leading causes of death worldwide and again probing that what we see in the U.S. is a pattern that is applicable to our global perspective. So we see again the two leading causes of death as in the U.S., our cardiovascular disease and cancer. And therefore, what this means is that the approaches that we are taking in this country have global relevance because the world is dealing with chronic diseases and in many cases, a lot of the countries that were plagued by infectious diseases are now having to deal with chronic diseases as they have successfully tackled infectious diseases and they have far less infrastructure to handle chronic diseases and the unique picture of needing to provide prevention, early intervention, treatment, and rehabilitation services over a protracted period of time. So the work that we do in this country has immediate relevance worldwide because of this worldwide pattern. I also wanted to show that chronic disease is not a pattern that we see just in high-income countries. A lot of people have talked about a perception, again, this is another misperception, that cardiovascular disease and cancer are diseases of affluence and wealth and a certain type of diet. And if we look at countries divided by the World Bank income groups, we're classifying countries as to whether they are low-income countries, lower-middle-income countries, upper-middle-income countries are high-income countries. And you can see that the majority of worldwide chronic disease deaths are occurring in the low and the lower-middle-income countries. So again, this is a pattern that we're seeing not only in the U.S., we're seeing it worldwide and we're seeing it across SES levels. And this really guides us when we're thinking about public health action, that we need to consider a global perspective on the strategies that we are developing for chronic I wanted to look now at how we would start tackling this pattern that we see of a change from infectious disease to chronic disease. And the first thing that we need to do when we think about prevention and early intervention with chronic disease is we need to understand what are the factors that are driving chronic disease. So what we want to do is understand the major behavioral risk factors of preventable death. This data is for the United States and we're looking at different risk factors and of the number of deaths per year, what are the actual causes of those deaths? And the leading indicators of the actual causes of death are tobacco, diet, and physical activity, and alcohol. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is that in addition to understanding the behavioral factors that are the causes of the pattern of disease that we see, we also need to realize the important role that social factors play in health promotion and disease prevention and in the pattern that we see. And it's particularly important to not just call the excess deaths and disease that we see in lower-income parts of the population a pattern, but to call it for what it is, which is a health disparity or a health inequity. And so I want to go through what do we mean when we talk about health disparity, what kind of pattern do we see in chronic diseases, and what do we mean by health inequity? So the first slide here is showing us about health disparities in heart disease, cancer, and stroke. And there's a very striking pattern here where the rate of death, the mortality rate, is higher for blacks than for whites for all three of these leading causes of death. So it means that we're seeing poor health outcomes for groups based on race or ethnic status. And when we see poor health outcomes for groups based on either gender, age, race, ethnicity, educational status, socioeconomic status, level of income, geographic location, level of disability or sexual orientation, when we see those poor health outcomes consistently for the socio-demographic groups, then this pattern indicates that groups may be experiencing discrimination or exclusion from public health approaches, either assessment, prevention, or treatment approaches because of their status, their socio-demographic status. So that is a health disparity. Health inequity is when we say that the disparity is due to a systematic injustice. And so it's not just a pattern that exists based on socio-demographic characteristics, but there is actually a social driver of the pattern that we see that reflects a systematic injustice. And common systematic injustices that we see particularly in racial and ethnic disparities are segregation and unequal treatment. So inequity then is representing not only that people have different health outcomes and mortality rates, but they have different access to what they need for their medical care. They have a lowered access to medical procedures that may be needed to diagnose their disease or treat their disease, and they may have lowered access to quality medical care. And so just to give you an example of what health inequities look like, this is white versus black, diagnosis versus treatment for women about mammography. And so in the first slide that's on your left, it's the percent of abnormal mammograms where the follow-up time is longer than 60 days. So there's a striking pattern of black women being more likely to have a follow-up time than longer than the clinical guidelines once they are diagnosed with an abnormal mammogram. It's taking them longer to have the follow-up diagnosis that would be done with a biopsy or a scan. We see the same kind of pattern with treatment. So the clinical guidelines are, once you are diagnosed, you should start treatment within 30 days. And the percent starting treatment within 30 days is lower for blacks than for whites. So this is a pattern of what we mean when we talk about health inequities. And there are many other health inequities, but this is just one pattern to illustrate. So what are some of our strategies that we can use to reduce disparities? So we want to use our understanding of all behavioral and social risk factors to try and approach health promotion and disease prevention, but disparities and inequities may take some additional work than just addressing risk and protective factors across multiple domains. So this is a strategy that's illustrated on the right that was part of the REACH 2010 project in New Orleans. And REACH 2010 was a project that was started by, he was surgeon general at CDC. REACH stands for racial and ethnic approaches to community health and it dealt with problems that were experienced by communities that showed health disparities, health inequities. The project that I was working on in New Orleans was addressing the inequities in cardiovascular disease health for African-American women. And what we did as a way to reduce the inequities is we took a lot of the messaging about how to change diet, how to improve physical activity, what the risk factors were for heart health, and we put them on a fan that could be used in churches. The population was, faith was very important to the population. We were doing this project in 40 African-American churches. The churches were not air-conditioned, New Orleans is very hot, everybody was fanning themselves at church. So this was a culturally competent way to provide the messaging that we needed to in a way that would break down those inequities and disparities. So that's an example. And then on the left, I've listed some of the common strategies for reducing disparities. One is to increase access to services through different kinds of financing mechanisms by changing around the organizational structure of health facilities and removing any legal and transportation barriers that get in the way of people accessing services. The second strategy is culturally and linguistically competent programs and the example of that is the Heart Health Fan, the Ten Commandments of Heart Health that I showed on the right. A third strategy is improving patient and provider communication. The fourth is programs that will eliminate provider discrimination and these can be training programs that occur when people are in medical school, nursing school, physician's assistant school. They can be continuing education programs for providers and continuing education programs that are provided by facilities. And then finally, increase minority representation on the healthcare workforce because when we have disparity in who provides services, we have disparity in who receives services. And then I wanted to end this section that we're talking, where we've been talking about the pattern of disease by sharing with you an excellent resource on the social determinants of health and how we can approach health equity by addressing the major social determinants of health. And this link, if you go to this link, you're able to download this resource from the World Health Organization at no charge. Okay, so I'm checking if there are any questions and I do not see any. So what I would like to do at this point is just check, for all of us to just do a quick check and self-assessment of how we're doing with that content that we just covered. So I've got poll questions throughout this presentation and we're going to launch the first two questions now. So I'm, I think I do this, I think I launch the first question. I'm going to try to do that. And so if you can read the question and answer, I'll give folks about a minute to answer this and then we'll talk about the responses. We had 89% of the attendees voting and 100% of you chose the correct answer. So the correct answer is major chronic diseases and conditions. What's the group that has the highest contribution to total mortality? Major chronic conditions. Thank you very much. I am now going to launch the second poll. We have 90% of people voting and the correct answer for the three leading causes of death is response B, which is tobacco, diet, physical activity, and alcohol consumption. 83% of you got that correct. Thank you very much for participating in this poll. We are going to move on now. And in this section, we're going to be talking about the social ecological model as a framework for looking at determinants of health across different levels from behavioral through social. And then we're going to be going through different theories of change that help us understand the mechanisms by which these determinants may influence health and disease. So the slide that you have in front of you is a depiction of the social ecological model. The innermost level are individual-level influences and these types of influences include the individual's biology, what they know, their attitudes, their beliefs and values, their sense of self-efficacy, how able do they feel to do things, to act for health, and their skills. The next box out from that is the interpersonal level and interpersonal level involves that individual in interaction with one or more others. And interpersonal-level influences include things like role modeling, social support, social norms that are communicated through the relationships that individuals have with their family, friends, and peers. If we move a little bit further out than the interpersonal level, the next level of influence is organizational level. And organizational-level influences are rules, policies, regulations, and norms of institutions that individuals are part of. And so for younger children and adolescents, a major institution is the schools that they are attending. For adults, the major institution is going to be a workplace, place of business. And so those are the levels of influence at the organizational level. If we move out of organization where you spend your time during the day, then the level out from that is community-level influences. And this is referring to the community that surrounds where you live and where you work and go to school. Community-level influences include things like the relationships among the organizations that are in the community, any informal networks that exist within the community, the strength of those networks, their mission and their goals and their approaches, and then community norms. And then finally, the level that is furthest out from the individual is policy-level influence, macro-level factors such as belief systems that could be religious or cultural belief systems, the norms that are the norms for the society, economic and social policies, and national, state, and local laws. So these are the different levels of influence moving from the individual level all the way out to the macro-social influences. And there are four guidelines about how the social ecological model works as a framework of determinants in order to guide our action directed at these determinants. The first guideline is that multiple factors influence health behavior. And so what that means is that we often need to develop interventions that don't just focus on one influence, but that focus on multiple indicators within or between influence levels. So for example, if we're trying to change a pattern of diet, we might impact upon a person's knowledge about food and we would impact upon their attitudes about eating and their self-efficacy about being able to change eating behavior. So that's that multiple factors influence health behavior. And also, we know that influences interact across levels. So to follow this example of food, if somebody at the individual level knows that they need to eat a different way, but they don't have access to healthy foods in their community, then a successful intervention needs to change not only the individual level, but also to change the community level of what's available in the community for encouraging that healthy behavior. A third guideline is that multi-level interventions are the most effective and that's because we've seen that there are multiple factors that play into the emergence of a disease and the continuance and duration of a disease. And the fourth guideline is that the most powerful interventions are when you have a specific behavior that you're addressing and trying to change. So here's an example from the field of tobacco use. And again, tobacco was our leading cause of preventable death. So I wanted to give an example that would be helpful for something that has relevance to hopefully many of the people that are on the call. So just some background about tobacco. Tobacco is the most preventable cause of chronic illness and premature death in the world. And we have a pattern of cigarettes. And we have a pattern of cigarette smoking having been decreased since the Surgeon General's reports, starting in the '60s, and then the more recent reports. So we have this pattern overall of adults and youth in the population smoking going down over time, trending downwards. But smoking rates still remain high among the more disadvantaged parts of our population, racial and ethnic minorities, individuals who've not graduated from high schools, and individuals who are living in poverty. So our overall decrease really belies this problem in hidden segments of our population who have not profited from this overall decreased trend in the leading cause of preventable death. Another issue that's important is background is that existing tobacco prevention and control strategies seem to have limited reach to racial and ethnic low-income groups because these strategies have been delivered in an environmental way, but seem to have less penetration to racial and ethnic low-income groups. And therefore, what this means is that a broader understanding of tobacco use may be necessary for us to have more effective and wide-coverage interventions. So the next slide is showing the social-ecological model as a framework for coming up with determinants of tobacco use. And this is an example from a project that I worked on with young low-income men who were attending employment training centers. So they had not graduated from high school. And I'm not going to go through the details of this chart. This is really more as a resource for everybody. I wanted to be able to take the general factors that were part of each level of influence, and for an example of tobacco use, give you the specific risk and protective factors that are in the literature so that you could see the different risk and protective factors across the different levels of the social-ecological model. I'm now going to go through theories of change. And I've divided theories of change into three different levels: the individual level, the interpersonal level, and the organization and community level. And there are, I should start by saying that there are many, many more theories of change than would be possible for me to cover in this review webinar. So I've had to be selective about the theories that I cover for you, but I have chosen to cover the theories that are most commonly used in social behavioral sciences in public health, that are most often part of the curriculum in schools of public health. And so I'm hoping through my selection to be most helpful to you. And I also will have a resource for you at the end of this section that has a more comprehensive review of all the theories of change, so you have someplace else to go to get that information. But we're going to start with the individual level, and we're going to cover the health belief model, theory of planned behavior, and trans-theoretical model. And then we'll go on to talk about those two other levels. When we're talking about theories of change at the individual level, we are using theories of change that help us understand and promote the health of individual health behavior. These theories, by being at the individual level, focus on things like beliefs, attitudes, and readiness to change of individuals. The first model, its focus is on individual beliefs as the determinants of behavior. So when we see a behavior that we want to change, the driver of that behavior are individual beliefs. And the major constructs that we're talking about when we talk about individual beliefs are perceived susceptibility to the severity of disease, perceived benefits of taking action, perceived barriers to action, and perceived self-efficacy. All of these go combined with a perceived threat of the disease. And that belief system drives our behavior. Another factor which drives the behavior in addition to the beliefs are cues to action, which are strategies that may activate a person's readiness to perform the action that's indicated by the beliefs. So the basic premise of the health belief model is that health behavior is determined by the perception of the threat of a health problem and appraisal of the recommended behavior to prevent the problem, and cues to action. The second individual-level theory is the theory of reasoned action. Its focus is on attitudes as determinants of behavior. The major constructs include behavioral intention, which is the intent to enact the behavior, the attitude, which is the evaluation of the behavior, and the subjective norm, which is the perceived expectation to perform the behavior from others. So the theory of reasoned action, major constructs are shown in orange on the graph to your right. The basic premise is that behavioral intentions are the best predictors of behavior, and behavioral intentions are directly influenced by attitude and beliefs about whether others approve or disapprove of the behavior. And what I wanted to show you, which I've done with the blue boxes on the right-hand side, is that the theory of reasoned action has been tweaked a little bit by adding some additional constructs. And this addition of additional constructs is called the theory of planned behavior. Theory of planned behavior expands from the theory of reasoned action by adding this construct of perceived behavioral control over the performance of the behavior. The third level of individual behavior is the trans-theoretical model. And the focus of the trans-theoretical model is that individual readiness to change is what determines the behavior that people engage in. The basic premise is that behavior change is a cyclical process where you move from pre-contemplation through contemplation, kind of weighing up the pros and cons of changing, determine when you decide to either stay as you are or to change, the active change part of the process, which is putting a decision to change into practice, maintenance, which is actively maintaining an initial change, and then relapse, which is when you return to a previous behavior. And so this cycle is part and parcel of the trans-theoretical model. And the premise of trans-theoretical model is that individuals differ in their readiness to change, and intervention strategies must be tailored for each stage of readiness to change. So what that means is if somebody is in the contemplation stage, there's an intervention that you need to deliver to get them from weighing pros and cons to making a decision. If they are in active change phase, then you don't do that same intervention. You do an intervention that takes them from an initial positive change to ways to maintain that change as part of everyday life. And so the cyclical nature and interventions that are directed at each part of this cycle are key feature of trans-theoretical model. Now we're going to talk about theories of change focusing on relationships. And these theories of change are used to help us understand and change the interpersonal interactions that are related to health behaviors and health status. And they focus on the factors that are part of the social relationships that individuals have with others. And the kinds of social relationships that are focused on include learning processes, the nature of the relationship between individuals and their family, friends, and peers, and coping strategies for managing stress. So first, we're going to talk about social cognitive theory. The focus of social cognitive theory is that learning processes are determinant of health. In social cognitive theory, the premise is that an individual learns from what they experience themselves. And also, they can learn vicariously when they watch what happens to others who engage in certain behavior, and they see what the consequences of those behaviors are. So it's very important that the learning can be what an individual experiences directly, but also what they witness. Another feature of social cognitive theory is reciprocal determinism. And the idea behind that is that behavior and interpersonal factors interact with one another. So it's not just a one-way street. When an interpersonal factor causes a behavior, that behavior in turn goes back and influences the interpersonal factor. And so this transaction piece of reciprocal determinism is another key feature of social cognitive theory. In social support, social network theory, the focus is on the relationships between individuals. And when we look at the nature of the relationship between individuals, we're looking at the nature of this relationship and how that might influence beliefs and behaviors. For stress and coping theory, the focus is on coping strategies as a determinant of health. And when strategies are few or poor strategies, then there may be an emergence or continuance of health problems. The basic premise is that stressful experiences are mediated by the individual's appraisal of that stress and the kind of coping strategies and resources they have available to manage that stress. Social influence theory is a process that's directed at changing behavior as part of communication. At social influence theory as a theory of change, we're looking at communication that may be part of a formal relationship as when a doctor communicates with a patient about changing a behavior, or it may be an informal process where a parent communicates with a child or a peer communicates with one of their peers. And one of the things that we've seen as part of social influence theory is that behavior change is more likely to occur when the interactions that we are looking at where social influence is happening is occurring from others who are similar. So when there is more similarity in the pair that's communicating, the doctor and the patient, or the peers, or when the communication is coming from somebody who is esteemed or valued or considered expert. Again, if the doctor is considered expert by the patient, if the peer is valued or considered esteemed or expert by the other peer, behavioral change is more likely to happen as part of social influence theory. We're going to talk now about theories of change that focus on organizations and communities. And these are used to understand the role that organizations may play in either supporting or inhibiting behavior change. And we're looking at things like organizational policies and practices, organization of the community and community-building capacity, the production and exchange of information within the community, and the dissemination of innovations. In organizational change theory, the focus is on organizational policies and practices as determinants of health. And there are two basic premises for organizational change. One is the stage approach, where the premises that organizations go through a set of stages as they engage of change, which starts off with an awareness of a problem, initiating an action to address that challenge, implementing the change, and then maintaining that change through institutionalization. The second premise is that there could be a developmental approach where factors that are related to organizational functioning must be identified and changed, that there's growth in organizations, and the change needs to be managed as the organizations change. Community organization theory focuses on community organization and community building as determinants of health. And the premise is that community groups will identify problems, mobilize resources, and design and implement strategy to reach common goals together. The third is communication theory. And the idea here is that production and exchange of information is a determinant of health. The premise is to use media and communication to provide information and influence behavior change. And the fourth theory is diffusion of innovation, which is the widespread dissemination of successful innovations as a determinant of health. The process of dissemination includes the development of the innovation, some way of communicating about the innovation. And then there's a process where there's an uptake of the innovation by the target population, where initially you see people who are early adopters, who take it on quickly. And then you want to see more widespread diffusion of a successful intervention by getting the people who are not the early adopters to also adopt it. And so there becomes regular use of an innovation, and there becomes a focus on sustainability and institutionalization. Okay, I'm going to give a case so that we can think about using some of these theories of change in typical situations. So this case involves a scenario. And what you are charged with is a cessation program for college students as part of a smoke-free campus initiative. You're using different theoretical frameworks to develop different components of your intervention. So we're going to have two different intervention ideas, and we're going to analyze them to see which theory of change is being used to guide the intervention. And so what I'll ask you to do is I'm going to put two statements up and raise your hand on the attendee panel if you agree with each statement. So our very first statement is "A very well-known and highly respected young artist endorses quitting tobacco use on a local radio program, which is popular with art college students." Do you agree that this is an example of the theory of planned behavior? Raise your hand if that theory of change is the best theory of change behind this particular intervention strategy. We've got about 9% of people voting. So if a few more people could vote, that would be great. I'll give it another 15 seconds. Okay, thanks everyone so much for participating. So we have 23% of people agreeing with this. And it is correct to disagree with this statement. And the reason for that is this particular strategy fits best with social influence theory because you've got a young artist who's somebody who would be esteemed by the art college, and you're trying to affect behavior change by the influence of this young artist endorsing quitting tobacco. So that's the theory that's the best fit. So we're going to move on to the second one. Same thing. You're going to develop a brief steps-to-quitting wallet card. Do you agree that this is an example of the health belief model? And again, raise your hand if you agree. And again, raise your hand if you agree with that statement. Okay, we have 27% of people agreeing with that statement. And actually, that is correct. It fits best with the cues to action that are part of the health belief model. So when you've got a brief step to quitting wallet card, when people open up their wallet, that's a cue to act, to quit. And so that's the way it fits with the health belief model. Thanks everyone for participating in the poll. And I hope, you know, thinking through some examples of these theories in action are helpful as a way of being able to see how the constructs work in public health practice. And what I'd ask you to do is in the next several weeks, try identifying constructs from theories of change that are the foundations for programs that you are working on or that you're reading about or you're familiar with. And make sure that you can go back and forth between the constructs and the theory and a real-world example to see that theory in action. And I think that will help you prepare for the exam when you can see the construct and you can think about a specific example of that construct in action. The other thing that I wanted to share with you, I told you that I had to be selected because of the number of theories of change that are used in public health. And this resource called Theory at a Glance is a very comprehensive look at different theories of change. So many more than the ones that I've been able to cover in this webinar are discussed as part of this resource. Again, you can go to this link, you can download it for free. And I encourage you to do that to help with your studying for the exam. Okay, we're now going to move on to the last section before our break. And we'll be talking about health promotion and disease prevention. I wanted to start off with distinguishing the difference between promotion and prevention. And these definitions are from the World Health Organization. I find them to be very clear. There are other definitions that you can, you know, that are certainly available. But I think the essence of these definitions is very generalizable and very helpful. Health promotion is the process of enabling people to increase control over their health and over the determinants of health. And the kind of activities that we usually see as part of a health promotion effort are activities that focus on changing knowledge, attitudes, and skills at the individual level, but also enacting laws and policies to address air and water quality, housing, food supply, income, and working conditions. For prevention, we have a set of strategies that are aimed at reducing the likelihood that a disease or a disorder will affect an individual. And the goal of prevention is to interrupt or slow the progress of disorder or to reduce the disability that is part of that disorder. This is a framework for action that has been part of CDC's work in recent years. It's called the Health Impact Pyramid for the Factors That Affect Health. And you remember when we talked about the socio-ecological model, we talked about different factors, but there was no focus on one particular level of influence. In the CDC Health Impact Pyramid, we're talking about interventions that address different levels within the socio-ecological model. But there is a preference for strategies that have the largest impact. And in the Health Impact Pyramid, the ones that have the largest impact are those at the bottom of the impact of the pyramid where you're changing the context that individuals live in or you're changing socioeconomic factors. So over on the right, I've given some examples of strategies at each level of the pyramid. And so for counseling and education of the pyramid, those are small impact interventions. And those are things like interventions which help individuals, work with individuals to eat in a healthy manner and to be physically active. If we look down to the bottom of socioeconomic factors which have the largest impact, then we're looking at strategies such as poverty reduction programs, improving education programs, improving housing programs, and dealing with inequality. And so these are more far-reaching, large-impact ways of handling health problems. And I just wanted to share this with you so that when you think about interventions, you don't just think about different levels, but you also think about that where you choose to intervene at which level may have different impact on the populations that you're working with. This is a continuum of prevention and clinical services that are based on the progression of disease. And so when we talk about prevention services, we talk about primary prevention, secondary prevention, and tertiary prevention. Tertiary prevention is typically what we think of as clinical services. And primary and secondary prevention are what we typically think about as prevention services. Primary prevention strategies are delivered prior to the onset of disease and include things like immunizations and safe water and food systems. Secondary preventive strategies are delivered at the very earliest stages of disease in order to identify the disease and detect it in an early way to be able to provide prompt treatment. So some examples of secondary prevention include screening for cancer and heart disease. And then tertiary prevention are meant to be delivered when an individual already has a disease. And what we're trying to prevent with tertiary prevention is the disability and complications or the progression of disease that could follow. So an example of tertiary prevention would be retinal exams for diabetics in order to detect diabetic retinopathy, rehabilitation after stroke and heart attack, and cancer survival programs. Another way of looking at prevention activities rather than primary, secondary, and tertiary is to look at who the prevention activities are targeted towards. And in this framework, we have universal strategies, selected strategies, and indicated strategies. Universal strategies are designed to be received by all segments of a population. So there's no selection out of a particular high-risk group. Universal interventions are given to all segments of the population. Selected interventions are directed towards subgroups within a population that have epidemiologically established risk factors. And indicated interventions are strategies that are designed to reduce and reverse in specific individuals an already pathological disease sequence. So when we're working with whole populations, those are universal interventions. When we're working with high-risk groups, gender groups, racial, ethnic groups, low-income groups, those are selected interventions that are directed at epidemiologically established risk factors for a disease. And when working with individuals who have a certain pattern of disease, there can be an indicated intervention for those individuals. I wanted to share with you that what we do when we do health promotion and disease prevention, it's very important that our actions be evidence-based. And what this means is that there's been a vetting process where independent panels and scientists who review the evidence have been able to look at intervention compared to usual and customary and been able to identify the things that have an evidence base for being an effective strategy. And there are a couple of resources that are available for you, one of which is the Task Force for Community Preventive Services, which produces the Community Guide. And in the Community Guide, there's an assessment of interventions and it includes recommendations about evidence-based interventions to improve public health. And for each recommendation, it'll show you strategies that are strongly recommended or it'll also say that a certain strategy doesn't have an evidence base yet or has a very weak evidence base. And this is a very good resource. If you go to this website, you can see information about organized by type of disease. And again, this is another free resource that's updated on a regular basis. The review of interventions and the updating of the recommendations about evidence-based interventions is done on a regular basis by CDC. To give you some examples, when we look at our four leading behavioral risk factors of disease, we know that they were tobacco, activity, diet, and alcohol. And so from the Community Guide, these are examples of evidence-based strategies for those major risk factors. And so I just wanted to give you some examples so that you see the kinds of things that you would find in the guide. And you can do this for any of the diseases that you are working with in your practice. Okay, I'm going to end this section with some comments that I wanted to make about community health practice, about principles that are important as part of community health practice. And again, these are principles that may be part of the exam. And I certainly want you to be aware of them as you're approaching your study for the exam. So the first thing about community health practice is the importance of identifying who your stakeholders are because practice is not done by public health professionals alone. You're working in concert with communities. And you need to, in order to be able to effect action, you want to identify who the stakeholders are, who would be as interested in seeing this change happen as you. They become your partners for the public health effort. So people who are typically stakeholders are the people who are sponsoring a program, decision-makers in the community, organizations in the community, and individuals that will be affected by the program. So when you're practicing, you typically put together an advisory board of stakeholders. And there should be representatives across all of these groups. Another key feature of community health practice is community mobilization. And that's the collective effort by groups and community members to increase the awareness about the problem and to advocate for change. The third principle is community assessment. So before, we need to know what change is needed. We need to know what the strengths and challenges are that are being experienced by the community. And one of the resources that I have found that has been very helpful for communities to use in order to do an assessment, that is a low-cost assessment of their strengths and challenges, is to pull data from publicly available data so that they don't have to necessarily engage in more expensive surveys and focus groups and things like that. Not that more expensive, you know, data collection wouldn't be helpful, but a lot of times, communities don't have the resources to do that as part of an initial assessment. So how do you get an idea about strengths and challenges in a very low-cost way? There is a data set that's been developed about public use data that shows community assets across a number of different levels. And I've included the website for that. And you can, again, this is a free resource. You can download this, and anybody can download this and use this. And it's very helpful for doing a low-cost community assessment. Finally, the last principle is community-based participatory research, which is a collaborative approach to making sure that the research is not just being driven by the public health professional, the health department, a health agency, but that involves all stakeholders in the process of doing the research, which means that stakeholders are involved throughout the research process, starting off with defining what the problem is, identifying and implementing solutions, and evaluating outcomes. So I'm going to end this section by doing two more polls and then we will take a break. So let me launch poll question three. Okay, thank you. We've got about 68% of people voting. And we've got 64% of people choosing C, long-lasting protective interventions. And 27% are changing the context. The correct answer to this one, in the CDC Health Impact Pyramid, fluoridation and smoke-free laws are examples of D, changing the context. And so in changing the context, what we're doing is changing the environment so that individuals' default health decisions are as healthy as possible. And examples of changing the context are fluoridation, transpat policies, smoke-free laws, tobacco taxes. Now, most of you chose long-lasting protective interventions. And I can see that because it kind of sounds like smoke-free laws are that. But long-lasting protective interventions are actually, in the Health Impact Pyramid, directed at individuals. And they include things like immunizations, you know, things that include a long-lasting protective influence. So things like immunization, cessation, and colonoscopy are all examples of long-lasting protective interventions. So I hope that clarifies things for folks. What I'm going to do now is launch poll four. So screening is example of, choose one of those. Okay, thanks. We've got about 80% of people voting. The correct answer is B, screening is an example of B, secondary prevention. And 75% of you got that answer correct. So secondary prevention is when disease has already started. We're trying to detect it early enough to be able to intervene as quickly as possible. So screening issues such as mammography, colonoscopy, screening for heart disease risk factors, all of those are examples of secondary prevention. The disease has already started, but we want to catch it early on. So let me close this poll. What we are going to do is take a 10-minute break. I've got 3:15 on my clock. So I will start again at 3:25. And we will start with part two. And we'll be covering ethical issues in planning, planning models, evaluation methods, and scaling up. So thanks for listening. So thanks very much for your attention for this first half. Enjoy your break, and I'll see you in 10 minutes. Hi, everyone. It's 3:25 by my clock. So as promised, we are going to be starting again. This is the second half of the webinar on Social and Behavioral Sciences and Public Health. And in the second half, we are going to be covering the ethical issues that need to be considered as part of planning a program and evaluating a program. We'll go through planning models. And again, there are many planning models. I am going to be selectively focusing on the most common model that is used in public health, covered most often in the curriculum. Again, to help prepare you best way I can for the exam, we'll be talking about evaluation methods. And then we'll be ending this second section with a discussion about scaling up programs and sustainability. So let's start with ethical issues in planning and evaluation. The first thing that I wanted to do was just to give a very, very quick and brief timeline of major ethical developments leading up to the Belmont Report, which guides institutional research with human subjects. So if we want to look at key milestones along the way for ethical developments, leading up to the guidelines that guide all research with human subjects currently, we start off in 1932 with the Tuskegee Syphilis Study. And we're going to go into some detail about that, since it is a very important aspect of poor ethical procedures in public health. And I think sometimes, we learn best about what ethical principles should be by reviewing mistakes and understanding where those mistakes to human rights happened so that we do not make those same mistakes again. So we're going to focus our attention on the Tuskegee Syphilis Study. But after that, in 1939, the Nazi experiments on concentration camp victims. In 1946, there was the Nuremberg Trial concerning the Nazi experiments. And that resulted in the Nuremberg Code surrounding research with human subjects. In 1948, the United Nations adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights about the rights of subjects in research. In '63, there was the Willowbrook Study, which was hepatitis research on developmentally-delayed children. In 1964, the Helsinki Declaration. 1972, there was the public exposure of the Tuskegee Syphilis Study. And in 1974, there were the first federal protections for human research participants. And 1979, we culminated with the Belmont Report, which promoted the three principles for conducting research with human subjects. So I want to go through the Tuskegee Syphilis Study. The image there is bad blood, because syphilis was commonly known as bad blood among the communities where the Tuskegee Syphilis Study was occurring. And in 1932, the American government promised 600 men, who were all residents of Macon County, Alabama, free treatment for bad blood. These men were poor and African-American. The 600 men, they were recruited by government health workers, and they were monitored for a 40-year period. And a very important point about this is that the men were told that they would be getting free treatment for bad blood, but they were never told that this was an experiment. The study continued for many decades after it became known that there was an effective treatment for syphilis. So penicillin was found to be the drug of choice, evidence-based treatment for syphilis. And what happened is when the 600 subjects that were part of the Tuskegee Syphilis Study were diagnosed as having syphilis by other physicians, the researchers, who wanted to follow the progression of disease, intervened to prevent these men from receiving the effective clinically-guided treatment for the disease. As many as 100 of the men died of syphilis during the study. And when the participants died, the researchers offered their family free burials in exchange for being able to conduct autopsies so they could delineate the disease process as part of the autopsy and have data that they needed for their study. It was reviewed throughout the four-year period by the U.S. Health Service. And it was extended every year following a review based on the position that stopping the study would interfere with the benefits to medical science that would accrue from studying this disease in the absence of it being treated. So Peter Buxton was the key whistleblower about the Tuskegee Study. In 1966, he was a U.S. Public Health Service venereal disease investigator. And he was working in San Francisco. He learned of this study, and he sent a letter to his director, the Director of the Division of Venereal Diseases. And he expressed concerns around the morality of this experience and this experiment. And a quote from his letter is, "The excuses and justifications that might have been offered in 1932 are no longer relevant today. Today would be morally unethical to begin such a study with such a group." In 1972, after having gone through his chain of command and tried to get action and being unsuccessful, which is a pattern that many whistleblowers follow. They initially try and bring up concerns within the organization, keep it within the organization. And at some point, there's a decision made when action is not forthcoming, and that you feel that there are ethical violations, you need to go outside of your organization and get others involved. Because at that point, the benefits for ethics outweigh any of the risks that you're going to experience as an employee. And you choose to make this courageous ethical decision, even if it costs you your job and the esteem of your peers and whatever the other social and economic cost might be. And Buxton was this way. In '72, he complained of the study to an Associated Press reporter in San Francisco, who then communicated with Associated Press in DC. And ultimately, in July of '72, the story appeared in The Washington Star, the Washington DC paper, by Associated Press reporter Jean Heller. So that was at the point when this blew open beyond just what was going on in terms of communication within the U.S. Health Service. A class-action suit against the federal government was started, and it ended up being settled out of court for $10 million in 1974. And in that same year, 1974, the U.S. Congress passed the National Research Act, which required that institutional review boards, or IRBs, approve all studies involving human subjects. In 1997, more than 20 years later, and every time I look at this timeline, I just feel so angry and sad about this. It took more than 20 years for President Bill Clinton to formally issue an apology for this study. And I know from talking with David Satcher that it was David Satcher who pushed for this apology to happen in 1997, when he was Surgeon General. Belmont Report is a follow-up to the Congressional National Research Act, which passed in 1974. The Belmont Commission was created to identify the basic ethical principles that would guide the conduct of research with human subjects. So in '74, we had the IRB set up. And then the Belmont Report tells us the three major ethical principles that guide all work with human subjects, that are what the IRB reviews when you put in a protocol to do research. And the basic ethical principles are respect for persons, beneficence and justice, informed consent, assessment of risks and benefits, and selection of subjects. So I wanted to give you several resources if you wanted to learn more about ethical principles. And I've tried to be judicious in choosing things, knowing that you have a lot to review for your exam. But I think both of for your exam, but I think both of these are valuable. The first one is the issue of deception in research, and it's from the Stanford Prison Experiment. So it's around this idea that you cannot conduct certain research, get certain answers, without deceiving the participants about why they are there. And I think it's very important to grapple with these issues about deception in research. The Stanford Prison Experiment is a classic example of that. And if you go to this website, you'll be able to see brief descriptions, you'll be able to see some videos, you'll be able to hear from participants, you'll be able to see information from the PI about how his views about the ethics of this study changed over time. So I find that a very interesting website. The second website that I'm sending you to is actually a YouTube video about responsible conduct in research. The music is terrible, I apologize in advance, but it is a really, really valuable video called "On Being a Scientist." There's a companion report that you can read if you want more detail, but the video is a very nice, I think it's less than 10-minute summary on responsible conduct in research, and I think that you will find that helpful. So I'm going to launch poll question number five now, so that we can consolidate our learning about this ethics part. This poll is the research that most strongly influenced the 1974 Biomedical and Behavioral Okay, we have over half of you voting, and 90% of you got the correct answer. The correct answer to this is D, the Public Health Service Syphilis Study. Thanks for the participation, and we're going to move on now to talking about planning in public health research. And so I wanted to start off, before we talk about the most common planning model, which is pre-seed-proceed, and then talk about some general planning model components. All planning is based on some kind of assessment about the strengths and weaknesses that are affecting a population, and some way of prioritizing the issues that a population is confronting, so that we have what are the priorities for public health in that community. And so it can be priorities for public health in a local community, it can be priorities for public health in a city or a municipality, it can be public health priorities at the state level, or the national level, or the international level. So there is a process that's gone through to look over public health problems, and then based on the magnitude of those diseases, to prioritize what we are all working on. And so I just wanted to give you an example of what are some of the priority public health issues at the national level. So CDC has identified what are called winnable battles, and winnable battles are high-magnitude public health problems that have effective, evidence-based interventions associated with them. So the six winnable battles are healthcare-associated infections, HIV, mobile vehicle injuries, obesity, nutrition, physical activity, and food safety, teen pregnancy, and tobacco. So these are all high-magnitude problems for which we know what to do. The other thing that I wanted to share with you is that there are also priority areas for health disparities. So areas where the rates between different subgroups of the population differ dramatically, so that certain subgroups in the population are more vulnerable and more at risk, and have a significantly higher proportion of the disease burden. And these major priority areas for disparities are infant mortality, cancer screening and management, cardiovascular disease, diabetes, HIV/AIDS, and immunizations. The process that we go through at the national level to come up with priorities for public health research is called the Healthy People effort. And the Healthy People effort has been going on, on a regular basis, it's been going on every 10 years since 1980. And the goal of Healthy People is to increase the quality of life that people experience, and also life expectancy, and thirdly, to eliminate health disparities. And the way we achieve these goals of increasing quality of life, years of life, and the elimination of health disparities, is to provide a framework of what the priorities are for public health. And for each of the priorities, there are measurable objectives that need to be obtained, and benchmarks. So we want to have an X percent decrease by 2015, we want to have this level of decrease by 2018. So there are these benchmarks that are given along with each objective, that can be used by local organizations, so that they can monitor over the decade, are they making sufficient progress on the public health priorities over time? So one of the resources that I think is helpful, if you'd like to learn more about the Healthy People Initiative, and learn more about Healthy People 2020, which is where we are, the priorities we're working on right now, is a very short video by Howard Ko, where he's talking and launching actually Healthy People 2020. And he's a very dynamic, very bright speaker. This is a short video, and I think that it's a nice resource for you to learn a little bit more about this initiative, the major priorities that we're dealing with as public health professionals, and some of the actions that we can take as public health professionals. Okay, so now I want to talk about the major planning model that's used in public health and is covered in most of the curriculum of schools of public health. And again, as with theories of change, when there are many different types of models, as there are many different theories of change, I need to be selective in the interests of time. And when I've been selective, I've tried to be most helpful to you to prepare for the exam. So I want to focus more of my attention on pre-seed-proceed, so that you're prepared for questions about that. But then I will also talk about several other models, and some of the common elements about planning, so you have a little bit broader information than just this one particular model. So it's called pre-seed-proceed, because there are two halves of it, each with four phases. The initial pre-seed component has these four phases. Social diagnosis, which is when you ask the community what it wants and needs to improve the health. Epidemiologic diagnosis is part two, where you identify health behaviors, interpersonal factors, organizational factors. So you're developing kind of a risk and protective factor profile that will help you understand and address this need that the community has identified in the first phase of social diagnosis. In the third part of this pre-seed-proceed is educational and organizational diagnosis. And that's where you identify predisposing, enabling, and reinforcing factors that may either help you or get in the way of changing the risk and protective factors that you identified as part of epidemiologic diagnosis. And finally, there's administrative and policy diagnosis, which is where you identify and modify any administrative issues and policies that you need to, in order to generate the funding and the other resources that would be needed for the change that you have planned. So for these four phases, the results from this pre-seed component, from all the phases, then lead to an intervention plan, and proceed is the intervention plan and its evaluation. So we'll look at that second part right now. Proceed has four additional phases. Implementation, which is starting up and conducting the intervention. Process evaluation, which is determining whether the intervention is proceeding as planned. So if you have a set of indicators, you want to make sure that what's actually happening is what was planned to happen, and you don't want to have this decrement between planning and what people actually do. Because the biggest reason why many interventions fail is people don't do exactly what's planned, they tweak it a little bit and change it. So process evaluation helps you tell whether an intervention is being delivered with fidelity. Impact evaluation is a determination about whether the intervention is changing the planned risk factors. And then you use an impact evaluation, which occurs pretty close in time to when you're delivering the intervention, so that if you see you're not getting the impact, you can go back in and change what you're doing, and try to get it to be a higher-impact intervention. You might find that you need to use different recruitment strategies, or you may need to do a booster intervention. But impact helps you take a quick look at those risk factors to see if you're changing them, and doesn't mean that you have to wait for years to see if a program has been effective. Outcome evaluation is whether the intervention is producing the outcome, which was the initial need that the community defined in the very first phase of pre-seed. And this is something that's further out, and again, you would adjust as you needed to. If you need to read more about this eight-phase pre-seed-proceed model, I've included a link that will help you go through this in much more detail than I'm able to right now. And I did want to diagram this for you, just so you can see how all of the phases interact together to focus on health and quality of life. And so you have the four pre-seed phases that we talked about initially across the top. That's to identify the community need, to identify risk and protective factors, to identify what will facilitate or what will get in the way, and to look at the resources that are needed to mount the intervention. At the bottom, you have implementation, making sure that implementation is happening as planned, and then your short-term, quick look at whether you're having the impact you desire, and then you have your longer-term evaluation of whether you have addressed the need that the community identified in Phase One. So this is a diagram of what we've just talked about, as a kind of helpful tool for remembering the different parts of the pre-seed-proceed framework. I also wanted to talk about social marketing. Some social marketing in the last 15 years or so has been another planning model that has been used with great success, especially with the use of more media-based interventions, large media and small media-based interventions. Social marketing takes the principles of marketing of consumable goods to planning interventions at different levels, for individual, the interpersonal level, organizational, community, or societal level. And what we are doing in social marketing is influencing the consumers, who are our target population for a health message, to buy a behavior change or some kind of health-related product or technology. So the planning about this is built around a marketing campaign that is focused on what's called the four Ps, which are the same four Ps that are part of marketing toothpaste or anything to the public. The first P is product, which is the behavior programmer technology. The second thing the campaign is built around is the price, which is the cost of adopting that behavior programmer and technology. Place is where the product is available or is going to be promoted. And promotion is how to promote the first three Ps through persuasive strategies. I did want to give you the names of several other planning models which have been used over the years. You know, feel free to search about these models if you want to understand more about their individual features. One is the Assessment Protocol for Excellence in Public Health. The second one is the Multi-Level Approach to Community Health. The third one is the Planned Approach to Community Health. And the fourth one is Mobilizing Action Through Planning and Partnerships. So here with this slide, I'm really just giving you kind of names that you can investigate more if you wish, and you may want to prepare by just reading briefly about each of these. What I wanted to say about planning before we leave planning is that regardless of the planning model, there are common elements that all of these models have. So regardless of which one you look at, there are common features that are part and parcel of a good planning model, and these are the seven features that are listed here. The first one is all good planning models involve communities involved in the planning process, and in mobilizing communities to be involved in the planning process. They include needs assessment at community and organizational levels. They involve selection of specific target audiences. They involve the development of specific, measurable, attainable, and time-bound objectives and their indicators, the so-called SMART objectives. They involve an action plan that is developed and then implemented, where you track that the implementation of the plan has happened with fidelity. They involve evaluation of program processes and outcomes, and they involve strategies towards institutionalizing the change. So what I am going to do now is launch poll questions six and seven, so that we can consolidate our learning about priorities and planning. Here's poll question six. In what phase of pre-seed do you identify predisposing, reinforcing, and enabling factors? And I welcome your participation in this poll. Okay, we have about three-fourths of the audience voting. Forty-three percent of you have said A, social diagnosis, and forty-three percent of you have said C, educational and organizational diagnosis. Okay, we're looking for the phase of preceded where you identify the predisposing, reinforcing, and enabling factors that can either facilitate the change or might get in the way of the change. And the correct answer is C, educational and organizational diagnosis. Social diagnosis is when you work with the community to identify what the need is, what is the health problem that they want to address. So good work. Let me now launch poll seven. And again, I welcome your participation in this poll. Okay, we have seventy-four percent of you voting and seventy-one percent of you have chosen the correct answer, which is C, impact evaluation. So in the phase of preceded where we are measuring the effect of the program on knowledge, attitudes, intention, and behavior, that's an impact evaluation. Where we want to see whether the program has changed the immediate factors that we hope for it to. And if it hasn't changed those factors, we go back and we tweak the program, we add booster sessions, or we change around some of our procedures. And this allows us to not wait five years to see whether a program has been effective, which would, you know, be more of an outcome evaluation. So really good work on this, being able to distinguish the different features of preceded. Thanks. Okay, so we are in our last section right now where we will be going over issues related to program evaluation. Can you get to the right slide? Okay, so we're going to be going over issues about program evaluation and then talking a little bit about what we mean by scaling up and sustainability. So first of all, what do we mean by program evaluation? Program evaluation is a research process. It's a systematic process, and it involves the use of either qualitative or quantitative methods, or it can be a mixed methods study where we blend qualitative and quantitative methods. And what we're trying to do by using this systematic research process is to answer questions about the program. And the questions might be about, you know, what is the nature of the problem that we are dealing with? How big is the problem? It might be a question about a process, like are our recruitment procedures reaching the intended audience? Do we have high fidelity between planned and actual activities? It might be an outcome evaluation, looking at whether the program has had an impact on the health problem. Or it might be about efficiency, like can we do this program in a cost-effective way? So can, can we do all of our procedures in such a way so that we minimize the cost for getting a certain effect? Program evaluation helps to make sure that all of our efforts are focused not on outputs, like how many people did we get to come to a certain event? Those are outputs. But how do we get our public health efforts to focus on outcomes so that we're not just content to get people to hear something or be at a certain place, that we're really focusing when we've done an effort on has it changed the behavior that's leading to preventable death in this community? So program evaluation helps us to do that. And it also encourages the use of scientific evidence for when we are needing to make decisions about programs and policies. And when we go through a program evaluation process, we want to be looking at the evidence-based strategies that we know from, from reviews of the literature and from the prevention task force and other similar scientific review panels have an evidence base for changing the particular health problem that we're trying to tackle. Program evaluation encourages the use of evidence-based strategies. So I want to go through the different types of questions that are commonly answered as part of a program evaluation. I'll describe what each type of question is and then share with you some of the more common methods that are used as part of that particular type of evaluation. So we talked about nature and magnitude of the problem. And when we're doing nature and magnitude of the problem, a common way to do that is a needs assessment, which will investigate the prevalence rate of the problem in the target population, what the consequences are of that problem, and also look to see whether subgroups of people or places are more highly affected by the problem than others. That's what we're doing with needs assessment. And some of the key methods that are used as part of this type of valuation would be key informant interviews, a community forum, agency records, community indicators from public data sets, or doing a survey of the community to be able to capture this information about prevalence, consequences, and subgroups more at risk. When we're looking at process evaluation, the purpose is to investigate the fidelity of the program implementation and also to look at the outputs of the intervention. So indicators are program, what program activities are delivered, who delivers the program, when and where are activities delivered, and the number of people served. And it's often very useful to build these into a program management system so you're able to monitor the activities, who delivers them, when and where, who, which participants receive certain things, just as part of your management of the program. And in managing the program well, using some kind of database, you can manager, manage the program, supervise staff, and you can also do a very good process evaluation from the same data. Outcome evaluation investigates the effect of the program on short-term outcomes, intermediate outcomes, and long-term outcomes. And to give you examples of different outcomes, short-term outcomes are things like increased knowledge, improved attitudes and beliefs, and increased skills. Intermediate outcomes might be the change in the behavior. And long-term outcomes are things like decreased, decreased rates of disease, disability, death, or decreased disparity. And so short-term outcomes are things that you can look at much closer to the time that the, the intervention is implemented. You need to see behavior change, which would be an intermediate outcome, would take a little bit longer to see behavior change, and it would take much longer to see decreased rates of disease, disability, and death from a program initiative. And so over time, you can start by looking at short-term outcomes. If you have short-term outcomes, you then look to see whether you get intermediate outcomes over time. And then as more time accrues, you look to see whether you've, you've gotten your long-term outcomes that you hope to with your planning process. An efficiency evaluation is when you compare the cost of the program to its effects. And if you're just looking at effects, like for every dollar spent, I get these number of people immunized, that's called a cost-effectiveness analysis. If you take the effect and you, you translate that to dollars, like for X number of people immunized, we save all these costs that are related to a non-immunized population, the people who get the disease and go into the hospital or the ER, or that miss two weeks of work, or the small percent that die, and then we, we lose that part of the population prematurely. When you take an effect and you put dollars attached to it, that's called a cost-benefit analysis. And that would be for every dollar we put in, we save $5. An efficiency evaluation also investigates competing programs to see whether you can get the exact same effect by a less expensive program. And this is important to do because we have scarce economic resources, and if we can get the very same effect from a less expensive program, we want to do that. I wanted to share with you the CDC framework for program evaluation in public health. It's commonly used by every health department in the states and the territories. So because it's such a widespread system for evaluation, I thought it would be useful for us to go over. It also has a lot of the evidence-based principles for an effective evaluation incorporated as part of this framework. So I think this is very useful for all of you who are studying for the public health exam and are practitioners in public health. The CDC framework is a systematic method for evaluation. As with other effective evaluation methods, it promotes a participatory approach so that all stakeholders are identified and included throughout the process, not just at the end, but throughout the process, starting in the beginning. And it focuses on using the findings that you get from evaluation to continuously improve the program. So we're going to go through the steps. In this framework, we start off with the step that's up at the top, engage stakeholders. And we move through describing the program, focusing the evaluation design, gathering credible evidence, justifying conclusions, and ensuring use and sharing lessons learned. We're going to talk about each of those steps now. The first step, engage stakeholders, means that we've identified the stakeholders who are program sponsors, people in organizations that are part of the community, and formal community leaders, people who are recipients of the program. We've gone through the work to identify who those stakeholders are. We've put together some kind of stakeholder advisory group that will allow representatives from each of those constituencies. And those stakeholders are recruited and engaged throughout the process so that they can be part of developing the evaluation plan, they can review the conduct of the evaluation, and they can make recommendations about use of the evaluation results. The second step is to describe the program. And typically, this is done by developing a logic model, which will be used to guide the evaluation. The logic model includes inputs, activities within each component, and then a trajectory of client outcomes that would be seen immediately following the program implementation, following the intervention, which would be the short-term outcomes, at a follow-up period, which would be the intermediate outcomes, and after a sustained period of program implementation, which would be long-term outcomes. Case study data could also be used to provide descriptive data about the program. The logic model is a standardized way of putting together resources, activities, outputs, and outcomes. The resources are the inputs. It's what resources are available or needed to conduct the program activities. The activities are the, the actual activities that program staff do in order to accomplish the program objectives. Outputs are the direct and immediate results of program activities. And it can be things like materials that are produced or services are delivered. So it can be things like, you know, X number of staff were trained, or X number of health passports were given out to program participants. Outcomes are the intended effects of the program activities. And again, we've talked about this trajectory of things that are short-term, things that are more intermediate, and things that are long-term that are seen with more and more time after the program has been implemented. The third step of the evaluation framework is to focus the evaluation design. There are different evaluation questions that are relevant for different stages of the program. So that every year, when you go through this process of focusing the evaluation design, the questions that you are asking at a particular point in time will change based on how many years your program has been implemented. At the very beginning that you're initiating a program, implementation fidelity questions are the key things that you want to measure. You've trained staff, you've developed materials, you're starting an initiative, and fidelity is telling you, is everything that you have planned that has the evidence base actually happening? Short-term outcome questions are important a little bit later on, once you're sure the fidelity is happening for the intervention. And then finally, long-term outcome questions are more appropriate once the program has documented that you have short-term and intermediate effects. And again, as we talked about stakeholders, stakeholders should be involved in developing these evaluation questions at each stage of the program. The fourth step is to gather credible evidence. And it's good to use existing data whenever you possibly can so that you're not spending resources to collect data, which takes resources away from services being delivered. So when you've got existing data that can be used, for example, when you set up a program management system that will also give you fidelity data for your evaluation, when you can do things like that, it's a very efficient way to use your resources. So you want to use existing data whenever you can. But if the existing data does not give you what you need in order to thoroughly evaluate the program, then you should develop tools and you should pilot them before using them in the evaluation. The fifth step is to justify conclusions. So from the data that was, that was either existing data or data that you collected from new quantitative or qualitative methods, you want to use quantitative and qualitative data analysis to analyze implementation fidelity, program processes, and program outcomes, and come up with conclusions about fidelity process and outcome. The sixth step is to take those findings and ensure that they are used and that lessons are learned so that the program improves over time. And part of this is making sure that there is very effective communication of the conclusions of the evaluation and the recommendations for change that come out of a review of those evaluation conclusions. So a communication dissemination plan is a very valuable tool for ensuring that the evaluation results are used and shared widely. And the communication plan can include things like internal communication strategies, how you communicate within your particular group that's developing, implementing, evaluating the program, strategies for communicating with stakeholders, program and provider dissemination, scientific dissemination, policy-relevant dissemination, and public access dissemination. And because you're, you're trying to communicate with different audiences, there are different communication strategies that would be appropriate. What you communicate to the scientific community at a scientific conference is not the same way that you would communicate to a policy holder who's making a decision, who needs something with talking points and needs policy-relevant actions to take. So all of these are tailored based on the audience that you're directing your communication to. A model that is also used in addition to the CDC framework, it's fairly widely, widely used. A model that is also used in addition to the CDC framework, it's fairly widely used in program planning and evaluation, is the REA model. And one of the nice features of the REA model is, like the CDC framework, there's a real focus on translating an effective program to practice. REA stands for the components of a set of activities. So it's reach of the program, effectiveness of the program, adoption by a large number of diverse settings, implementation with fidelity, and maintenance through institutionalization or becoming part of an organizational policy and practice. So I wanted to share that with you, so that you are familiar, at least in a very summary way, summative way, with this model, since it's a model that is seen in public health practice. And now I want to talk about dissemination and scaling up. And then after we're talking about scaling up, we'll talk a little bit about, very little bit about sustainability. So this is the last section that we'll be talking about, the end part of the second half of this webinar. In dissemination, we're talking about the targeted distribution of information and intervention materials to a specific audience, which might be a public health audience or a clinical practice audience. So some examples of dissemination of information that are critical for quality improvement of a program are things like quality improvement cycles, to where you take evidence-based strategies and you move them into practice. And so this might include things where you monitor key indicators on a regular basis. There's a review of the monitoring data, and then there may be practice coaches or practice and policy changes that institute quality control and quality improvement at planned intervals, so that the results that you get from your evaluation are incorporated directly back into practice and policy. Another form of dissemination might be decision support tools in order to improve the uptake of the intervention. So your evaluation might show that providers are not always doing every single step of an evidence-based intervention, and you might develop tools for those providers to make sure that they cover all of the elements of an active, informed, shared decision-making process with their patients and clients. And that might be a dissemination tool that would help improve the uptake of an evidence-based intervention. So that's dissemination. Scaling up refers to when we want to increase a program's impact while maintaining its quality. And there are different types of scaling up, and we're going to go through what those different types are. There are four categories of scale up. The first is quantitative. When in quantitative scale up, what we're trying to do is increase the number of clients that are reached by a program. And this might be by adding a new target audience. So we might have had a program that was 16- to 20-year-olds, and now we're adding 21- to 25-year-olds. We might increase our numbers by expanding into a new geographic area. We might be increasing our numbers by adopting and using different materials or approaches by others. And also, another way of increasing numbers of clients reached might be to use diffusion of innovation theory, which would help us get better coverage of our target population, where we want to move from the early adopters and make sure that everyone in the population is taking up this evidence-based intervention. A functional scale up is when we're expanding the breadth of the program. So we're increasing the number and type of technical areas addressed by a program. So an example of this might be a program that was directed at cardiovascular disease risk factors, might expand its breadth by also including cancer screening or diabetes screening as part of screening activities. So we've gone from a more narrow focus to a broader focus when we're doing functional scale up. Political scale up means the ability to address the barriers that exist to effective program services. And when we're doing political scale up, the strategies that are typically used are advocating for or developing efficient processes, developing clear policies and guidelines, and standardizing materials and techniques for education and training, so that we can take things that might have been developed in one setting and make sure that they have this broader impact by addressing some of the political barriers that get in the way of a broader impact. So things like when the American Academy of Pediatrics does a training to all of their members for standardized clinical protocol that's evidence-based, that addresses some of the political barriers that are part of a scale up that are political in nature. And the fourth category of scale up is organizational, and that's when you improve one's own or another organization's ability to continue to support an initiative in an effective way and in a way that is also sustainable over time. So some of the strategies for organizational scale up would include diversifying or stabilizing your funding base. And by this, I mean if you have one source of funding for a program, and that funding source goes away, the program goes away also. So an important part of scale up is to get, you know, different funding sources partnering together to help you with the program, and then if one goes away, you don't feel, doesn't mean that the program shuts down. You want to increase the use of effective financial schemes for funding the services, things like if Medicaid, if things can be billed through Medicaid, that helps you, over time, you can develop cost codes for your procedures, and you can do Medicaid billing, and then you've got some, a financial scheme that will help support the delivery of program services. You want to develop strategic alliances to increase your resources. One of the interventions that I'm doing right now is a community assessment and planning tool that communities can use to deal with environmental justice issues in their neighborhoods. And we've just formed a strategic alliance with the libraries in Philadelphia, where the digital resources specialists of each branch will help, will help community coalitions complete a community assessment and a community action plan. So that's been a really important alliance to keep, you know, at no cost to this program. This alliance is happening in order to promote environmental justice issues in Philadelphia. And finally, building technical and management capacity of collaborating agencies, so that through this enhanced capacity, we're better able to sustain efforts. So I wanted to talk with you about sustainability. With sustainability, some of the strategies that have been found to be effective, that help a program go on beyond its initial funding period, are to build the community and the organization's capacity in management, advocacy, fundraising, and training. These are all critical areas for implementing the program initially and keeping it going. You want to utilize, whenever possible, simple, user-friendly materials and tools, so that those materials and tools are generalizable and don't have to be changed rapidly over time, incurring additional expense. So things like information that you're commuting, communicating when you're using pictograms and things that don't rely on different language levels in the population. It takes away having to translate things into multiple languages, which may be cost prohibitive. So always be thinking about using simple, user-friendly materials and tools. Involve your community members in every step of the program. Develop, implement, and institutionalize cost recovery mechanisms, like Medicaid billing is an example, whenever you can. Develop, implement, and institutionalize quality assurance and self-assessment tools, so that people are kind of constantly in this cycle of how do we monitor what we're doing, and how do we continuously make it better? And it's, you don't wait three to five years for an evaluation to be conducted. We have some way of monitoring and then quickly responding to make this the strongest program possible. We want to build on pre-existing structures. So if you have a standalone program that's been found to be effective, you know, can you move it into a clinic, or can you move it into a community organization and share infrastructure to make it more sustainable? You want to develop program leaders and champions, and you want to encourage cross-community learning, so that not one person just holds the information about how to make this program work. So what we're going to do right now is launch our very last poll question, so we culminate this area of the webinar. And here we go. I welcome your participation. A program that adds new target audiences or expands in a new geographic area, this Okay, we have about 70% of you voting, and 100% of you chose scale up, and C, scale up, is the correct answer. We've reached the end of the webinar. I want to thank everyone for really, really great participation with the poll questions and with the case example we've done. I've really, it really means a lot to me to be able to do this, to help you study for the exam. I so honor and am so humbled by the many of you that every day are engaged in public health practice, dealing with the most pressing problems of our communities, often with much less than the support and the resources and the acknowledgement that you deserve. So thank you so much for the service that you give on a daily basis, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to help you study for this exam, and I wish you all success with the exam. I will now answer any questions you have, if there's anything I can do more to help.
Dr. Olmar, it looks like we have a couple of questions that have been submitted. Would you like me to read them aloud?
Sure, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, let's see here. How are beliefs about behavior in the theory of reasoned action different than the beliefs in the health belief model?
Well, I think that's a subtlety. Let me see, actually, if I can go, if I can go back to that slide, so that we can look at that. It's a great question, and a lot, a lot of times, you know, when there are subtleties, it's so easy to get confused. So let's go back to this and see if I've been able to be as clear as I can be about the distinction between the two. Okay, so here, in the health belief model, what we're talking about is there is some perception about how threatening a particular health problem is. And the perception of threat is what is driving a behavior, either we're doing something or not doing something. And that threat comes from beliefs in these specific areas. How susceptible am I to this disease? What are the benefits to me for taking action? What are some of the costs of taking this action, your psychological or economic costs of taking action? And am I confident that I actually could take this action that I'm supposed to take? So those are the beliefs that are focused on as part of the health belief model. They all go into how big a threat we think this is, and then that drives what behaviors we choose to take. And again, cues of action will help us take that behavior that we've said that we want to take. Okay, here is the theory of reasoned action. And in this case, we don't have this kind of prescribed set of beliefs about perception of severity, perception of self-efficacy. These are beliefs about the behavior or evaluation of the behavior, and normative beliefs about what do most people do. So in a way, it's a subtlety. Beliefs are involved in both of these theories of change, but there is a, there are very specific beliefs that are the constructs of the health belief model, and there are more generic beliefs that are the beliefs of theory of reasoned action. Does that, does that help for the people who had the question?
I believe so. If there's a follow-up question, please do post it in the question box. The next question we have is, doesn't the influence of the artist also fall under subjective norm in the theory of planned behavior?
Yes. So that's another subtlety question. And you know, I really appreciate these questions, because I think it's through the subtleties that you, that you learn things. So if we go to that case example, we're trying to do tobacco cessation at our college. Okay, so subjective norm is this idea of like, what do most people do? And the key factor here, if we look at scenario number one as an intervention, is this idea of well-known and highly respected. So in subjective norm, it's kind of like, what do most people do? When, when we're looking at an intervention strategy that doesn't try to communicate, most people do this, most people do this, most people don't do this. When we look at something where you pick somebody who has high value and high esteem, you're trying to use the interpersonal relationship of, we're more likely to have change happen when the person who's giving the message is esteemed or valued or considered expert by the receiver. So although subjective norm is a possible answer, I think the best answer is social influence, because by choosing the highly respected young artist who is similar to this college population and is, who is esteemed by this college population, we're trying to use social influence. Let me just go back to when we talked about the premise of social influence. So that second bullet is really what's critical here. Behavior change is more likely to occur when the interactions are with others who are similar and who are esteemed and valued and are considered expert. So in our case example, where we have a well-known, highly respected young artist who would be very similar and esteemed by this population, we're trying to use social influence as the best fit theory, as the, as the framework for this intervention. Again, follow up if that, it doesn't make things clear.
Great, thank you. It looks like we have one more question. Can the four Ps also be referred to as five Ps with personnel or people included?
Yes, I have seen that. Thank you so much. That's a great question. People have played with that basic model and elaborated it, and what I wanted to do was give you the kind of most classic model, because exams do tend to focus more on classics than newer elaborations. But you're absolutely correct, there have been a lot, a lot of the elaborations have not necessarily come out of the marketing field, they've come out of the social marketing field, when people have tried, have tried to apply the marketing principles to small and large media situations, you know, particularly the entertainment media interventions that are being done in the developing world. So thanks very much, that's a great question. So thanks very much, that's a great question.
Okay, great. I don't think there's any more questions that have been submitted at this time. Do you have any closing remarks, Dr. Olmar?
I do, I do not, but thank you very much.
Okay. We'd like to thank you so much for your time and expertise, and for having this very interactive, very hands-on study session for the CPH exam. I'm sure it'll help everyone tremendously. And just as a reminder for everyone, you can register for the last of the five study sessions, BioStatistics, on February 12th on the NBPHE website. Today's session will be archived on the NBPHE website with the additional 2015 presentations, slides, as well as the recorded session will be posted within the week. And if there are any further questions, please feel free to contact NBPHE, and we can get those answered for you. And thank you very much for your time and attention. And again, Dr. Olmar, thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Have a wonderful day. Bye-bye.